Call the meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order for the November 12th, 2013 meeting. This time I'd like to ask everyone to please rise and I'm going to ask Mr. Rogers to lead us in our invocation, then we'll follow it by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise. Let us pray. Most kind grace heavenly father, we as in the past few weeks, we've had our hearts burdened with the loss of such wonderful principal in Anna Williams. Lord, we pray that you continue to be with her family, with her children, her parents, her in-laws, and be with the school of Meadow Brook Elementary. Be with those children, be with their staff. Lord, we pray that you be with each and every one of our schools and our principals and those staff and those teachers as we continue to strive to educate the children to the best ability that we can and that we can have some of the best children in Haywood County come out of our school system and go on to be the doctors, the lawyers, the auto mechanics, the farmers, the workers in the industry. Lord, we pray that you guide and direct this board and direct our administrative staff to make the best decisions that are in your best interest for our school system and our children. All these things we ask in our precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. He may be seated. We have two board members that are not with us tonight. Mr. Kirkpatrick had a family event that he needed to be at and Mr. Francis, Jim Francis, has had a business engagement that he had to go to and so keep those folks in mind for safe travel for Mr. Francis and I hope Mr. Kirkpatrick has a wonderful family event this evening. Our next regular board meeting will actually not be December 9th. It will be held Tuesday, December 10th. That'll be a change from our normal protocol being the second Monday due to a scheduling conflict. It will be here at seven o'clock at the Education Center. Board members, I'd like to remind you also that North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference is November 18th through the 20th and I think most everybody that's going to go is already registered and we're all ready to go. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact Ms. Moody or myself on any information concerning the meeting or travel. Are there any other announcements from any of the board members? I pray we don't have snow in school out tomorrow. I'll just add that little two bits in. I'd like to get us at least till after the first of the year. Are there any agenda adjustments that we need to talk about, board members? Okay. Well, there is one item that needs to be added under the Finance Committee. I do know that we need to approve a capital request that was discussed and passed at the Finance Committee meeting early tonight that Ms. Milner will be presenting tonight. Now I will recognize Ms. Ginny Wood.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, it is a great honor. I recognize the 2013-2014 Haywood County Schools Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Sally Hunley. Mrs. Hunley is a nationally certified teacher and currently teaches grade 6A at STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics at Bethel Middle. She has also taught at Waynesville Middle and Pisgah High School where she began teaching in 1993. Sally received her bachelor's degree from UNC Chapel Hill, her master's from Appalachian State, and is currently working on her doctorate in administration at Western Carolina. From Sally's Teacher of the Year portfolio, I'd like to share some of her words. Because teaching is my calling, it has my heart. With that love comes dedication to this profession. It is much more acceptable to talk about my desire for law flung learning, but the truth of the matter is that I'm a nerd. Teaching gives me a reason to grow in knowledge and skill every day. Behind my desk in my classroom hangs a sign that asks, "What did I learn today that I didn't know this morning? This is not for my students, it's for me." When I think of the, when I think of 200 days each year for the past 20 years, I find the amount of new knowledge remarkable. Some days, it is new skills learned from an article, a colleague, in professional development, but most often, it is learning something new from my students. I love when they come up with a new way to solve a problem, a new way to approach an idea, a piece of information that I've never known. That new learning stokes a fire in me to keep building on my students' learning. They bring so very much to me that I am dedicated to giving my best to them. I am blessed to come to a profession each day where I am talented, a profession that I love. I present to you the 2013-2014 Haywood County Schools Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Sally Hunley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's my pleasure to introduce the 2013-2014 Principal of the Year, Mrs. Heather Hollingsworth. Heather has served as high school PE and health teacher. She's coached basketball, volleyball, and softball, and she's been an assistant principal. She is now principal at Jonathan Valley where she continues to teach, coach, and be the instructional leader. The students, teachers, and parents at Jonathan Valley think that she's awesome, she's serious, she's fun, she's dedicated, she's a hard worker, but most importantly, she loves children. Last year's Principal of the Year, Mr. Jeff Haney, had this to say about Heather. She's a product of the Haywood County and has worked very hard to become the principal she is today. She's dedicated to the success of her staff and students and she wants our entire school system to be great. Also, she has the most passion for educating all children. I present to you Mrs. Heather Hollingsworth, Principal of the Year.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, members of the board, tonight, it's with pleasure that I get to recognize the National Title I Distinguished School for Haywood, for North Carolina. The National Title I Distinguished School Program is a project of the National Title I Association. Each state can name two distinguished schools through its program. One school is honored in the category of exceptional student achievement sustained for two or more years and the other's in the category of closing the achievement gap between student groups. At the October board meeting, Jonathan Valley Elementary, as well as Bethel Elementary, were recognized as nominees for the North Carolina Title I Distinguished School Award in the area of exceptional student achievement. Only 12 schools in the state of North Carolina received this nomination. In September, Mrs. Hollingsworth and her staff were notified that Jonathan Valley Elementary School would receive a site visit from the State Committee. This visit took place on September the 30th. On October the 12th, Jonathan Valley and, as well as Bethel Elementary, received an invitation to attend a luncheon at the North Carolina Title I Conference in Greensboro to be held on October the 31st. A ceremony honoring the 12 distinguished school nominees was held prior to the luncheon. In the selection phase, it was between Trion Elementary and Jonathan Valley Elementary. Jonathan Valley Elementary School was awarded this distinction of 2014 North Carolina Title I Distinguished School in the area of sustained student achievement. Tonight, we want to recognize Jonathan Valley, as well as the staff members that came with them for this fantastic journey.
Yay, this is the best part. This award says, "National Title I Distinguished School 2013, Jonathan Valley Elementary. The Haywood County Board of Education congratulates the administration, staff, and students. We sincerely appreciate everyone's hard work and dedication."
I don't want to talk about Principal of the Year, but I do want to talk about Jonathan Valley. This is the coolest, this has been the neatest, coolest, craziest beginning of school that I've ever had in 22 years and whenever I say 22 years, it maybe it reminds me of how old I am and how long I've been in this business. But really and truly, what helped us win this award? It's the staff, it's the students, it's all of that, but the thing I think that pushed us above Trion is our community support and the amount of community support that they saw that day when they came for our visit because we had 42 people in the community that came that day and met with those two ladies that did our visit. And when they left, people were crying and they were really telling those ladies how much we care about their children on an individual basis. And so that's, that's really what helped us. Jonathan Valley is a great place and I invite any of you board members, please, and I know several of you have already come and eaten lunch with us. It doesn't have to be Thanksgiving, it doesn't have to be Christmas, it doesn't have to be School Board Appreciation Month. We eat lunch every day, so come on out and we'll feed you for free. We're nice like that.
Well, Ms. Heather, on behalf of the board, again, congratulations to Jonathan Valley. Let the staff and everyone know how proud we are of you. I know it took a lot of hard work. I think it's unprecedented that a county back-to-back years is recognized in that category and I think it's due to the fact there's a lot of dedicated, hardworking people in our school system. Thank you for your hard work. I believe next on the agenda is Mr. Ron Moss.
Chairman Francis, board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, we have a number of other people to recognize tonight, some teachers, a student, and then some community people who have been very instrumental in working with our district over the last, oh, probably 12 or 13 years through the Haywood Environmental Initiative. And I'm going to ask Carla Billups to come forward. She's been a member of that initiative since its inception to come and talk about the individuals that have given up their time and service to our district.
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Mr. Chairman, the board, I'm a teacher at Jonathan Valley School and I've been fortunate to be involved with this great group of people. Throughout the years, we've been able to work with students and teachers, really focusing in the area of water quality because water quality is so important here in Haywood County. It starts with us here at the very top of the watershed and to making sure that our students all understand how important that we are water stewards. And to do that, it takes a lot of people. So we've had a great group, community effort of working with us, to work with teachers and provide resources for us and places to work and all kinds of ideas. And so we'd like to recognize those people this evening. Our first person, I don't see him here, is Glenn Barnett. He is the environmental program director at Lake Logan and he's, early on, when Lake Logan opened up to, wasn't champion anymore, they opened up Lake Logan and we had our greatest turnout ever for a workshop. We had like over 200 people sign up to go because they every wanted to go to Lake Logan and see what it was like. But he's been very, very instrumental in providing a space for us to go up at Lake Logan. So, how we can drive down tonight. But our next person is here, Susan Sacks. She's the education coordinator at the Appalachians Highlands Science Learning Center, Purchase Knob. She has been very instrumental in providing us a wonderful location for every year for our science in the Smokies and always very contributing to ideas and generating things for us to what we can do and it's great to have the National Park Service as one of our members. Gail Heathman, she's the education coordinator for the Haywood Soil and Water Conservation District. And Gail is, has a huge job. She's in charge of the Test Farm Day, which is getting all those people to show up and worrying about rain delays and making sure the day goes below. She helps run the Yes Camp, which is an environmental day camp for our students. She's FFA, area land judging. She provides all kinds of free resources. It's kind of like the run for the best posters at our science in the Smoky Day because she brings us all kinds of great resources. She runs the Envirathon and she's also has scholarships and grants that many of our students have received with the poster contests and the essay contests. And she's also in charge of our Conservation Teacher of the Year, so we appreciate all of her efforts and help. And our conservation teacher from this year from Haywood County was the state winner, so that's pretty great. Our next two are from Haywood Waterways, Eric Romanician and Christine O'Brien. Eric is the executive director of the Haywood Waterways Association and Christine is the project assistant for Haywood Waterways and they are in charge of Kids in the Creek and that's all the eighth graders get to participate that every year where they do all kinds of sampling of the macroinvertebrates and looking at the quality of our water and they've worked with over 10,000 students in this time. And so, and they help with densuling of the drains and things like that. So we appreciate Haywood Waterways all the time. And Steve Fraley, he's not here this evening, he's our fish guy. Steve's from the Western Aquatic Wildlife Diversity Coordinator and he's really helps us providing with native fish for the four aquariums. They just brought back, brought some sculpins to my classroom today and it's always really, really incredible for the kids to raise the fish and take care of them and name them and then let them go back into the river at the end of the year. And so we really appreciate Steve. And finally, our last group of people, they're not here, but is the Pigeon River Fund. The Pigeon River Fund has been a huge sponsor and funder of this program for the past 10 or 12 years and so it couldn't have been done without them. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have two teachers who have been awarded distinguished honors. I will ask Mrs., yeah, Jill Chambers, principal at River Bend Elementary, to come forward and talk about Amanda Northrup.
Chairman Francis, school board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, it is an honor to share that Amanda Northrup, Amanda Northrup, was awarded the District A Elementary Outstanding Teacher Award this past Thursday, November 7th, by the North Carolina Science Teachers Association. District Outstanding Science Teacher Awards are presented to recognize excellence in science teaching in North Carolina, to teachers who exemplify the excellent creative innovative teaching of science. This award complements many of Ms. Northrup's other achievements, such as receiving the Presidential Award for the Excellence in Mathematics, the Career Award for Science and Mathematics with the $175,000 grant through the Borough's Welcome Fund, the Western Carolina Peak Performer Award, as well as the UNCG Alumni Award. Amanda has facilitated over 500 hours of science and mathematics professional development. She has presented at conferences, has even orchestrated a science conference for the students at River Bend Elementary. Words cannot accurately depict Amanda Northrup in the classroom. I like to use this analogy, when describing Ms. Northrup, almost anyone can learn to play the piano, but when the gifted pianist plays, one is captivated by the experience and will stand in awe to listen to the gift and the beauty of it. Well, that's how it is when Ms. Northrup is in her classroom teaching her students. It's awe inspiring, so thank you and congratulations, Ms. Northrup.
I will have Heather Hollingsworth from Jonathan Valley come and introduce our next
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, it is with great pleasure that I get to recognize Carla Billups, a fifth grade teacher at Jonathan Valley. Carla, I didn't even write down all the things that Carla does. She is a Mickelson Fellow, I know that's one of the biggest things, one of the coolest things, in my opinion, and she goes every summer and she gets to do that with science. She is, she is tireless and everything ties to science. Watching her in the classroom, I'll just echo what Ms. Chambers said, it's just the coolest thing ever and the kids love to be in that room and, and really, it is about science. I've walked down, walked down to the creek with them before. I've gone to Purchase Knob and looked for salamanders under, under, what are those? Cookies, yes, is that, is that right? Okay, yeah, thank you. So I've gotten to do a lot of really neat stuff that I never got to do as an elementary student because we didn't do all this neat science stuff. So just in the time that I've gone through Haywood County Schools and then watched as, as we have progressed, it is folks like Amanda Northrup and Carla Billups who are truly leading us into the future with science, technology, engineering, and math. So congratulations, Carla.
Okay, we have a student to recognize tonight. Her name is Sadie McClure. Sadie is a senior at Tuscola High School. She was chosen as one out of 125 students to form the U.S. Army Marching Band and perform at the halftime ceremonies on January 4th at the All-American Bowl in San Antonio, Texas, a place I would love to visit. In reading about this, the recruiter in our area talked about the fact that she was not only chosen because she excels musically, but she also displays loyalty and integrity, which is, which are two characteristics of people who serve in our armed forces. She, in order to apply for this honor, had to videotape herself playing her instrument and marching. And I think another really neat thing is, instead of practicing as a group, she has a music check that she's required to do where she videotapes herself rehearsing the music for this performance and then I guess you all will get together that one day in San Diego and practice. I think that's really neat. The other thing I think really makes this an honor for her is she represents three people chosen out of our district and our district encompasses Buncombe County, Haywood, Polk, Transylvania, Macon, and Cherokee Counties. So I think for Sadie and for our district, that's a real honor. Congratulations.
Congratulations for being chosen to participate in the United States Army Marching Band during the 2013 All-American Bowl in San Antonio, Texas. We're very proud of the way you represent Tuscola High School and the Haywood County Schools, so thank you very much.
And we have two teachers to recognize also. The first one is Cecilia Ruth Marcus. Cecilia Ruth has been named the 2012-2013 National Outstanding Teacher. This award is given to civics, U.S. history, or social science teachers. She was chosen for this honor because of her creativity, her effectiveness, and her inspiration in both school and community. And her goal has been to strive to help the students in her classroom learn about and better appreciate our country's history. Congratulations. Thank you. I don't see the other person here tonight, but Gail, could you come and help me with this one because you could explain? This is Janet Frazier. Janet Frazier was named the Conservation Teacher of the Year for Haywood County and I just thought you could help explain what all that entails. I know some of that, but not, not all. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Each year, we have five different contests. We added a couple, a couple of years ago, so we have a lot of different contests going and during awards night in February, we honor all the students who win and we also, these students can go to the next level and we recognize a Conservation Teacher of the Year. This is based on, obviously, teachers that work with the district's educational programs and Janet Frazier, last year was her first year at Bethel Middle as an AIG teacher. She was also working at Ken Middle and she developed Envirathon teams at both schools. She also embraced the contest that we had involving PowerPoint or an essay contest. So even though she didn't have that lengthy a history, I went ahead, whenever we have a Teacher of the Year, we can submit it on the state level. And I really didn't expect her to win. The quality was certainly there, just not a lengthy timeframe, but she won. So we received word of that a couple of weeks ago and in January, we have an annual meeting every year and this year it's at the Grove Park Inn. I think it's January 4th, she will be recognized by the State Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts. My supervisor, Carlisle Ferguson, is back there and there are 96 districts in the state and each one has a board of five supervisors. So all these people will be recognizing Janet Frazier. Now I was distressed to learn this, this fall, that she was no longer at the middle school. She had gone to Central Elementary, but she's kept in close touch with me and she's already eager to do the poster contest with those elementary students. So she's, she's very good at promoting the environmental stuff to the kids and I'm real proud of her. Thank you.
Thank you for doing the job.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, tonight, it's with pleasure that we're going to be sharing two parts with you and the first part we're going to share is the AIG rigor in our system and you'll recall that back in June, we had rewritten our AIG plan for the state for 2013 through 2016 and you approved that and so tonight I have, I actually, oh, she made it. I thought I was going to be short one. It's the one that's pregnant because she lives in Silva and we were afraid for her to be on the road with the snow. So I'm glad she's here, but we're going to, I would like to introduce to you first of all, my, just three of my specialists that we have in the county. I have with me Brittany Pless. Brittany is assigned to Jonathan Valley Elementary and June Luska Elementary. Amy Tucker is at Bethel Elementary and Meadow Brook Elementary. And then I brought Julie Jacobson, who is new with us this year and she is the one who replaced Janet Frazier that Gail spoke about and she is new to Bethel Elementary, Bethel Middle School. So I'm going to let the elementary take over first and then we're all going to tell you what we're doing K-12 because AIG is a K-12 program and we're going to tell you what we do at the different grade levels to increase the rigor and to show you how it's different than what regular children get in the regular classroom. classroom.
Hi, my name's Amy Tucker. And again, I teach at Meadow Brook and Bethel. And basically, I thought we'd start with just the program, the vision. Haywood County Schools, our mission is to discover, nurture, and develop the potential of every student by providing a challenging education for all of our students. That being said, for the lowest to the high, the AIG program, these are our beliefs. I'm not going to read them all to you, but I'll kind of highlight. Our belief is that they need to perform or show the potential to perform at a substantially high level of accomplishment when compared to others of their age, experience, or environment. Basically, that means they're performing not at grade level, but above grade level. And it doesn't have to be across the board, but in an area, something specific to them. Again, from all cultural groups, we try to make sure that our tests are culturally equal and that all students have an equal chance to get within the program. We also believe that we need early and continuous opportunities. So, that being said, our program has now evolved to where we actually will serve kindergarten students as young, well, as young as five, as soon as they come in and we find out that they have needs. The AIG program is actually like any good educational program, or how I feel. It has flexibility, and it's willing to grow to the needs of the students. So, basically, in the past, students would come, they would be identified, and they would all come to the same class. And they would receive skills or lessons on critical thinking or problem solving. The program has now changed where you come for what it is. You are identified. If you are identified in math, you come for a math lesson. If you are identified in reading, you come for reading. And if you are intellectually identified, then the lesson you come for is something that's going to stretch you in your critical thinking and in your areas, kind of get you out of your box a little bit. Brittany's going to take over this part.
Hi, I'm Brittany Pless. Like she said, I'm at Jonathan Valley and June Laska. And this is my first year in AIG. But we wanted to give you a little bit of a snippet of what we do, some of the units that we plan. Everything that we plan is based on the Common Core. So, the unit that you see here is our roller coaster unit that we begin with our 5th graders when they come to us at the very beginning of the year. You can see the integration of science and reading and math. These are just the main goals that we've highlighted. There's a whole lot more that it reaches to. But you can go ahead and flip to the next slide. We wanted to show you a little bit of the rigor that occurs in both subjects, areas. These students begin the year by scaling, and they scale model before they can ever construct their roller coasters. They have to not only scale model the coasters, but other things within the classroom, their peers, different things. That has to do with fractional dimensions, multiplying the size by fractional dimensions. They get a technology component when they begin to collect data. So, you'll see data collection up there. They also have to research their coasters, and they have to be able to use the website to understand what components they have. We set a time limit that says your coaster should run for approximately this period of time. And with their team, they have to collaborate and come up with the parts and the pieces that make it reach that intended goal. A lot of teamwork, a lot of problem solving, a lot of building. But beyond that, the data that they collect leads to many graphing components. And I have a slide here in a second, and then I'll show you some of that. But they do function tables, we do line plots, we do all sorts of ordered pairs in all four quadrants. One of the things I want to mention when I get to those slides is, the data that they collect is, of course, found by them independently. But the activities they do with that data are not just 5th grade related. They do goals, such as working in all four quadrants, that are based on middle school Common Core standards. They don't master those standards, but are introduced to them before their peers see those content ideas. And in reading, there were some other things listed there. But basically, they're dealing with informational text. It's got complex vocabulary. It's got a complex text structure. It's filled with data. It's filled with statistics and facts. They read about Aristotle, Galileo, Newton. They understand, you know, the principles that they developed and the theories that they have. And the goals that we have with our reading are to mirror the fundamental skills that they're supposed to master, and they're supposed to be able to use throughout life. Main ideas, themes, context clues, textual support, inferring. And there's a written and grammar component with all of this, as you'll see on the next slide. The top slide there, we've been working on forming strong hypothesis and how to write scientifically. So, they do write in our classroom quite a bit, but also not just, you know, the proper way to form a sentence, but also how to write it scientifically or in different formats. And you can see in your top right photo there where we've talked about working in all four quadrants. As a 5th grade student, they are only required to work in quadrant one. However, we have them translate, rotate, and reflect in all quadrants, just as if a 6th or 7th grader would do. The one in the center there, you can see that they're working with line plots, but not just marking those points. They're working with a slope and discovering the slope of the line. And then down at the bottom, you can barely see, there's, we had a line graph in the middle. I'm sorry. We have a line plot down at the bottom. And for 5th graders, they're supposed to work with unit fractions, one half, one third, one fourth. Our students work with mixed numbers, five and two thirds, five and one fourth. They have to find the mean, the median, the mode, the range. 6th grade goals that these students are already working with in our classroom. You can see the end product in the bottom right-hand corner. The students have developed their actual paper roller coaster. And like I said before, it's a great team building effort that these students have to problem solve and be able to construct.
For 4th grade, instead of doing a whole unit, we thought we would kind of narrow it down to a math lesson. One of the lessons the 4th grade students have actually already completed this year. This is their work. On the left is what is in the Common Core booklet. Angle measurements as additive non-overlapping parts and using a symbol for unknown angle measures. On the right is what the actual AIG students did. As you can tell, they had to draw parallel lines with the transversal. They then had to figure out complementary, supplementary angles. They had to draw in perpendicular lines. There's the parallel lines with transversal. Corresponding angles, alternate interior, exterior angles, adjacent angles, vertical and reflexive angles. These are things that when you can now ask the children, draw me parallel lines with transversal to 55. And then you can ask them what the alternate interior angles would be. And they can tell you. Give them a few minutes to do all the math. And that's pretty stepped up for 4th grade. Here's another 4th grade lesson, if you don't mind. It says that they need to measure angles in a whole number of degrees using a protractor and sketch angles of a specified measure. Well, our students, we do teach them how to use the protractor because the 4th grade teachers, I'm sure, will tell you they really don't know much about it. But we take it to the next step, and we give them a compass as well. So, we do a circle study. They learn radius, diameter, circumference. They learn how to draw concentric circles. But they also learn about inscribed perpendicular lines, a construction of inscribed polygons. And then we also build function tables to determine the formula for measurement of interior angles. And that is a very difficult process because they have to take the information that they have because they don't have all of the numbers. They don't have the pentagons, and they don't have septagons. But they have to go from triangle, square, then they have to go to hexagon and octagon and see if they can figure out the pattern so they can then plug in the pentagon and the septagon. It's a lot of hard work, and it takes a lot of steps to get there, but they become very proficient by the end of the lesson. 3rd grade, we kind of went another route. We went more into speaking and listening. In 3rd grade, we teach them about enigmas. And they love it when you start talking about the Loch Ness Monster. What we give them is a very complex text. It is full of theory and fact. The students have to read it. Then they decide if they are believers or non-believers. Do you mind going to the next one? This is what the lesson looks like. Rigor within the lesson, they get a complex text. They have to identify key points. So, they decide if they are a believer or not believer and form a team. They go back through the article and figure out with highlighters what would be the most important parts of that text to prove their sock. In 3rd grade, they're supposed to write a persuasive paper. So, this is the next step, not writing a persuasive paper. They have to persuade me, the teacher, because they don't know what my belief is, to believe the way they do. And I take a record of their debate, so you can kind of see what the kids came up with. The believers started up with the sightings of Nessie almost 1,500 years ago. The non-believers came back with archaeologists think that Nessie may be a pleosaurus, which became extinct 65 million years ago. By the way, they get aggressive with this. It's really quite cute because they're like, yeah, take that. And then they come back with movement in the lava are just big waves, you know, they're big waves from Nessie. They came back with geologists believe the waves are actually seismic rumblings. And so, this goes on until the end of the period, and they get so excited. But what they've learned from it is initially, they just want to spout facts. And what we learn is your fact has to either support your side or knock the other side down and disprove it. And so, it becomes a very strong lesson. And then they come back, and they're like, can we do Bigfoot? Can we do the Bermuda Triangle? What are we doing next? So, they get very excited about it, and they learn a lot of skills. And it's just a wonderful lesson.
For 2nd grade this year, we kind of decided to go with a fables unit because one of their goals is that they're supposed to be able to recount fables from diverse cultures. And so, you can go to the next slide. But there's our Common Core basis. Basically, one of the big things we want our 2nd graders to do is to be able to express their self in writing. They didn't do as much in 1st grade, so we want to be able to help them get it on that paper. We want them to have complete thoughts. We want them to be able to write complete sentences. But also, when we do this, this is a strong literature study because this is a difficult genre. It's got, you know, difficult phrasing and wording within it. It's got a difficult text structure for 7-year-olds to have to read. And so, we work on character motives. They have to infer based upon the attention to their emotions. They have to look at their actions, their demeanor, all those sorts of things. But we also look at what's another part of their Common Core, the plot, the cause, the effect. But we look at such things as consequences and implications. And for a 2nd grader, when you get to the word implications, you blow their mind a little bit. So, we have to talk about what those are, and we go into that study. But they also determine the morals independently, and then they apply these morals to real-life situations. For example, there's a time to work and play. When you're a 7-year-old, a time to work and play, you have to think about what that means and application to you. And so, we have a discussion about that. And you can see those things listed there, cause-effect sequencing, so on, so forth. But like I said, our big goal is writing. In the bottom corner, you can kind of see where they've went into, and they've written the sequence of their events. They've written in charts. They have cause and effect there. So, a lot of writing for our 2nd graders to get them used to responding to a text. Next is 1st grade. With 1st graders, we do not have a set reading and math pull-out slot. So, we work on a lot of reasoning and developing fundamental skills in all their areas. First, we want them to be able to see things through multiple perspectives. We want them to be able to reason quantitatively, and we want them to be able to reason abstractly. Most 1st graders are concrete thinkers. They want it hands-on. They have to manipulate it. For these kids, we want to challenge them to be able to think about it or visualize it mentally. And so, just as you can see in the list, several things that they work on. In reading, they work on closed reading, using inferring from the text, inductive and deductive logic. They use their clues to reason. For math, like I said, it's mental, and they use number combinations, number decomposition, and anything that's abstract that makes them think it through in their brain. And the last step is K-1 nurture. And like Amy said, this is kind of a new program to be sure that we're reaching out to those young children. It's an early identification program. And we use the program called Primary Education Thinking Skills. What we do is, as an AIG teacher, we go into every K-1 classroom in our school. We do a whole group lesson. And we use that lesson to determine who we think has the skills of giftedness or who we think possess the skills. And then we choose small groups to come to our room for advancement. And when they're in our room, you can see a list there of some of the things that we work on, but basically, a lot of reasoning, a lot of logical thinking, inductive, deductive logic, convergent, divergent thinking, visual, spatial manipulation. For an example, kindergartners have been translating and rotating and reflecting different objects to be able to make something meaningful in the context. And for my 1st graders, they've been working on attribute determination and what that means in the context of shapes, based on their Common Core. But a little bit further, when you ask a child to take a shape, when there's four attributes they can work with, and only change one or only change two, they really have to understand the depth of what an attribute is. So, that is it for the elementary portion, and I'm going to turn it over to Julie for middle school.
Hi, mine's short. I want you to look at these shapes up here. These are the five platonic solids. And they are shapes that are usually addressed at the high school level for the Common Core. If we could go to the next slide. So, these are the Common Core for middle school geometry. So, look at the difference between the middle school Common Core shapes versus the five platonic solids we just looked at in complexity. And I just underlined and emboldened the main words of each Common Core. So, rectangles and triangles for 6th grade, quadrilateral rules, polygons, cubes, and right prisms for 7th grade, cone cylinders and spheres for 8th grade. So, one more slide, please. So, this unit covers high school geometry standards. So, those are a couple of the standards that it covers. And what students did was, it was a 6th through 8th grade unit that we just got done finishing. And it was scaffolded so that students could work at their grade level. However, what blew my mind as a beginning teacher was how many 6th graders just sailed right through it onto the 8th grade level so that they were, they were not working, they were working 8th grade AIG level. We're talking 10th, 11th, 12th grade geometry level. So, what I had them do was create 5 to 8 polyhedra out of paper. And those are some of the examples of what they looked like. And the first couple, they used nets, which are the flattened version of that shape. And they just cut them out and folded them together and taped them together. And they knew that this one should be a cube or that one should be a pyramid. But then the next two, I didn't tell them what shape they were going to make. So, they had to figure out what the possibilities were with this flattened net. The last shapes, they didn't have a net. They just had to make the shape based on geometry. And then they applied Euler's formula, which is the number of faces plus the numbers of vertices minus the number of edges. And under Euler's formula, it always equals 2. So, they had to test the shapes that they were making to see whether they were platonic solids or not. So, there can only be five platonic solids. They, and they had to test the shapes that they were constructing to see whether they succeeded in constructing them or if they invented some other crazy geometric shapes that wasn't really a platonic solid. So, let's try the next slide, please. So, those are some of the shapes like they made. And the 6th graders, I anticipated just to stop with making the five platonic solids, and we're going to move on to our next unit on the Egyptian pyramids. And we would already know how to make a pyramid. But like I said, they were so ready to keep moving that one of our 7th graders actually was the first one in the whole AIG program to make the above shape, the top shape, a stellated octahedron. So, these are variations of the five platonic solids. So, they had to research the possibilities of variating these shapes by adding projections, by taking away faces, and still keeping them as platonic solids. So, they had to keep revisiting, keep trying to innovate new things, but using geometry formulas to test it to see if it still was within the constraints of being a platonic solid and not just some random triangular prism or some other, you know, three-dimensional object. So, we were trying to stay in the confines of making this one type of shape while being inventive. And what I was really focusing on was trying to keep them thinking logically and inventively at the same time to take away the randomness out of creativity and invention and innovation so that they were operating under constraints of logic and reason and the Common Core, but stepped up at their, above their level. Instead of just, let's cut out paper and tape it together and see what cool thing we can make. No, it was like, let's use mathematical principles to create things that are very specific, yet very unique. So, there are hundreds of variations of the five platonic solids. And those are just the names of a few of them. But we came, we had all kinds of crazy shapes. And at one point, Jan came into my room, and there was just piles of paper everywhere and parts of shapes everywhere, frustrated pieces in the garbage can. And we just kept working through it and working through it. And so, it ended up being a multi-grade level. Some 8th graders were not quite ready for what I thought that they would be able to do, but still, we're talking high school level geometry. And then some 6th graders were beyond ready, and they're, you know, eager to do more. So, one more slide, please. So, this unit worked out really great because it involves so many different levels of thinking that I was able to use it as a segue into three completely different lessons that we're just starting. So, like I said, in 6th grade, these are extension activities for what they're doing in their core courses. So, I have collaborated with these teachers. And the 6th graders are working on a unit in social studies on ancient Egypt. So, I'm extending that lesson on pyramid architecture, ancient engineering. We're taking virtual tours of the pyramids and learning how they were built, why they have stood for so long, what geometry has contributed to the fact that they have been standing for so many years. In 7th grade, they're studying the Renaissance in social studies. They actually just finished it up. So, these polyhedra were used during the Renaissance by Da Vinci and Brunelleschi and all of the architecture and all of the beautiful things that we see in Renaissance Florence. So, we're just getting into applying what we learned about the polyhedra mathematics to what the engineers of Renaissance Florence did to create the Renaissance there. And then in 8th grade, the 8th graders are so excited about making inventions. That's all they have been talking about. So, we're doing a unit on inventions and trying to play off of that inventive thinking and that more, that creative innovation with a purpose, not just random, let's put a bunch of stuff together and see what cool thing we can make again, but what principles of logic and reason and math can we use to create interesting and innovative inventions that are purposeful? create interesting and innovative inventions that are purposeful. So, and they each keep a journal, all of the students' journal, all of the math. So, I could open up any student's journal, and they will show you all the formulas that they've done for all the shapes that they've made, whether they've proven or disproven their own theory that this would make a platonic solid, and then how these shapes are feeding into whatever unit they're doing right now. And that's it.
Okay. So, then let's talk about what happens when an identified AIG student gets to the high school. If they have met all the prerequisites at work, and have achieved the grades that are necessary, those students may be placed into honors or AP classes at the high school level. And high achieving students may apply for governor's school. This past year, we had four of our students. We submitted several names. And the way governor's school works is they give us a chart that we go by. Students have to have a 92% or higher on an IQ test, and they also have to have a 92% or higher on an achievement test. That could be an EOC exam, or it could be, I go in very often. Last week, I went to Tuscola, was testing students there. Tomorrow, I will be at Pisgah for the next two days, giving both an aptitude test and also an achievement test. The students who have a 92% or higher in both areas, then it's an extensive application. It's not just a matter of filling it out and turning it in. They have to write essays that are submitted. And then, each school has a scholarship committee that nominates the students to fill the slots. With our enrollment, it's based on grades 10 and 11. We have five academic slots, and we get 10 performing and visual arts slots. Now, the academic, when we look at those, those are more of your English, math, the sciences, and your social sciences. In the performing visual arts, that's the dance, art, theater, musical performance, that type. And then, we have a few unlimited slots. This year, we are allowed to nominate five students for the academic slots, because we have just slightly less than 1,100 students. So, we have five slots there. And then, we're allowed to nominate 10 for the performing visual arts slots. Each student goes, they're assigned to, once, if they have to go for an audition, they're invited to come down for an audition. And then, they are assigned to either the East or West Campus. One is at Meredith. One is also in Winston-Salem. The students go for five and a half weeks, and it is a $500 tuition for each student. Now, those of you who are on the board recall that last year, Dr. Doris Hammett, who is a retired pediatrician from here in Haywood County, she is just so supportive and generous with her funds. And so, she does pay up to four kids to go to governor's school. And this past year, we had four who were selected. And so, starting next week, I'll be meeting with a counselor from Pisgah and Tuscola, and we'll bring those names together and determine who gets, who, names actually get submitted. We don't know until March who actually got selected to go to governor's school. But another thing that we do is, I take some of the AIG funds that I get from the state, and I make sure that I do, teachers, very often, I will receive a request from the high school principals, asking that they're going to put a new teacher teaching an AP class. And so, we send them to an AP summer institute. Often, is it Davidson College or at UNCA? Those teachers go and board there normally for at least a week to receive the rigorous training that's needed to teach an AP class. So, we have paid for that quite often. And then, also, the teachers in these classes will submit requests for me to purchase additional materials that are needed. Sometimes, it may be a textbook, or it's just some of the AP prep classwork. And so, I do try to help with that as much as I can with the funds that I receive from the state. And also, competitions. Very often, whether it's some of the math competitions or science, they'll request that I pay either the registration, or it could be for the bus driver, because that's things that they don't have money for. So, that's one of the ways that we do try to support the high school program. So, being a gifted student in Haywood County is definitely a K-12 initiative that we have here. So, thank you for your time, and we welcome you to visit any school that you'd like to, to see what's happening in this great program. Thank you.
Recession, then we'll reconvene in about five minutes. About to call the meeting back to order. Now, according to my agenda, it's open session, or if we got one other item to do. Casey, all right, let's do that.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte. Hazelwood Elementary takes great pride in our PE program. We have always had an excellent, top-notch PE teacher in our gym. We currently have a teacher that is in his third year of teaching, and he is doing an excellent job in continuing that tradition of providing our students with quality teaching and learning. He was recently recognized by WLOS in their Thanks to Teachers segment. This was a well-deserved honor, and it is a privilege to introduce Mr. Casey Conard.
All right. Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte. First off, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we're doing in PE, and also talk to you about how we're keeping physical education rigorous in Haywood County. I want to tell you just a few things that we're doing. First, I want to tell you what we're doing to teach our students cognitively in our PE classes. All right. So, one of the things we're doing is we're integrating a lot of different subjects. So, we're doing math, language arts, science, social studies on our PE classes. And we do this using different types of activities that keep students moving, keeps them thinking, and keeps them learning. So, my favorite example, actually, I wouldn't expect in the video, but my favorite example is what we were doing on that video was a game called Fraction Pipelines. And what the students are doing is they're working in teams, and they're using golf balls with fractions on it. They have to reduce the fraction, and then put it in the correct bucket with the reduced fraction. So, for example, 4/16ths would go into 1/4th bucket. So, but I like these activities, not just because the students are working on their math skills, but they're also learning to work together. They're learning to communicate, and they're learning to problem-solve within groups. And I think that as adults, people can have challenges with that. So, I think the earlier that we teach our students that, the better off we are, and the better off they are, which is what really matters. Also, at Hazelwood, we're implementing the Leader in Me program in our curriculum. So, that focuses on teaching students the seven habits of happy kids, which is based off of the seven habits of highly effective people. So, it's a great opportunity to talk to our kids about being proactive, putting first things first, beginning with the end of mind, and all those habits. So, I think that that's a really important part of integrating, not just the school subjects, but also social skills and that kind of thing. So, I've written here, "It's not only good for school subjects, but it's also important for teaching students how to properly interact with one another." And I feel like, not just at Hazelwood, but at all the elementary schools in Haywood County, we're making a commitment to teaching our students that. I also want to tell you a little bit about how we're keeping PE rigorous physically. So, as everyone knows, times have changed. PE is not just running around, rolling the balls out. You know, we're still being active. We're still keeping the kids moving. But I like to think of what we're doing as being purposefully active. So, one way we're accomplishing this is with our new fitness assessment that we've created as elementary teachers. And the new fitness standards are challenging for our students, and it sets very high expectations for them. It's a very difficult test, but it's not, that's not necessarily what it's all about for us. So, what is it all about? For us, it's about making sure our students understand how to attain that high level of fitness, and also what it means to attain that high level of fitness, and why that's important to living, you know, a long and healthy life. So, I have here, you know, an example is, students at our school, at Hazelwood, should understand that cardiovascular endurance is measured by the Pacer test. And they also should know the exercises that go along with that, and how they can increase their Pacer score, therefore increasing their cardiovascular endurance. The last thing I want to touch on is a program called Virtual Physical Education. And I know that this has been brought up before, but I just want to kind of update you on how that's going for me personally. So, to me, this is one of the best tools that we have to keep in our students challenged. With virtual PE, we're assessing students' skill levels, and we're setting very high expectations for those skill levels. And the way we do it is, it's a program that we have that gives us standards that relate to our North Carolina standards. And we give students a 1, which is below grade level, through a 4, which is above grade level. Over the first three quarters of the school year, we assess all the standards over the first three quarters that are given to us. And then, that last quarter, we reassess all our standards again. And I think that this program is great, because it allows us not only to track the students' progress, but it really allows us to see which students may need a little extra help in a particular area or a particular skill. And that's real important when you're a PE teacher, because somewhere at Hazelwood, you know, I have 500 students. I'm responsible for every one of those students, and it's holding us accountable for making sure those students, and every one of them, is reaching their potential. And I think one of the most important things that VPE does, and I know this year, we've gone to be able to give a letter grade in PE for third through fifth grade. And that grade's not based only on skill, but it's, the virtual PE takes into account students' attitude. It takes into account their participation. So, with the help of the VPE, we're able to give our students a letter grade for PE based on their skills, based on their attitude, based on their participation. And I think that that's really helping to make our programs rigorous. I feel like it's highlighting the importance of PE for parents and students, and I also think it's helping hold the students' parents, and in us as the teachers, accountable for how well our students are performing in PE. So, those are some of the ways we're keeping PE rigorous. And that being said, I'd just like to thank our administrators and U.S. School Board members for allowing us to give those grades, and to make positive changes in PE, and also supporting those changes. So, I feel very supported as a third-year teacher in Haywood County. I'm very appreciative of that. It also shows the county that we're taking physical education very seriously, and we're taking the necessary steps to ensure our students are having all-around education, and the best all-around education possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Conard, for your kind words, and congratulations on your achievement. Thank you very much. We've had several folks sign up to address the board tonight. And I'll read our opening comment, and I'll ask you to come up. And we have a three-minute time limitation on it. And so, I'm going to read the comment, and then we'll start calling everyone up. Now is a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. First, the board would like to recognize Mr. Tim McCaw.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Garrett. Now, I don't talk as fast, so I may have trouble getting it in three minutes, but I'll hurry. But listening to Mr. Conard, you know, I remind myself when I was in PE, I didn't see anything wrong for just running around kicking the ball, but whatever. I wouldn't have enjoyed it as much if I had to learn. But times have changed, and that's one reason I'm here, is times have changed since 1972, when Title IX came in. And I'm just being concerned a little bit as a father of a school athlete. I've got a daughter in the ninth grade at Tuscola, and the inequalities that I see between the male athletes and the girl athletes. And one of those is in the practice of the coaching. You know, if a high school football team, and I love football as much as anybody, but if a high school football coach resigns or whatever, not just in this county, any county, you go out and you try to find the very best coach for that team. You don't just, "Who volunteers to be the head football coach? Okay, you've got it." And I see that going on some at Tuscola as far as the girls go. And, you know, these girls, I feel like deserve equal opportunity for scholarships, for higher education. Title IX wasn't just for athletes. It was just to help females in general get a good education, get a higher education, get scholarships. Prior to 1972, very few ladies, statistics say 2% got scholarships, very, very low. Now, you know, you see a lot of people going to school on scholarships, athletic scholarships, females. And I just want to address the board, and the reason my timing was what it is, is I understand the girls' volleyball team's going to be looking for another coach. And all I ask is if the board would give them equal opportunity. You know, don't just take a volunteer, or a history teacher, or a math teacher, and put them in there coaching these girls. Give them, give them a fair opportunity to, you know, take applications, and sit down, and go through them, narrow it down, and actually pick somebody that has the girls' interest, you know, and knows what's going on. I'm not trying to say you need to change how you hire. That's not my job. I just ask that you give them equal opportunity, just like you would a boy's football coach, you know. And when you get to high school level, even in the girls, they're not just girls, they're athletes, just like the boys. And it's not recreation anymore. It's not like, I guess I could coach a little league baseball team, qualified or not. But when you get to the high school level, it's a little bit different, because there are scouts out there looking at them. You're not going to get a lot of scouts coming if you don't, you know, if you don't have a quality team. So, all I'm asking is fair share for the girls.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. McCaw. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Steele. I think I butchered your first name last time, so I left it alone.
You'll hold it this time. Mr. Francis and the board.
Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte.
Tonight, I just wanted to say that last month, I really appreciated the presentation on rigor. And I was also impressed, you know, how much is going on in the middle school, and the offerings of honors classes in middle school. But I want to address my concern, and many parents' concern, of the lack of spaces for students, of class availability once they get to Tuscola, and they're in the ninth grade. If there are only 25 slots for 40 students that were honor students at middle school, that's a problem. To me, it's like, the cream always comes to the top. But if you take a ladle, and you scoop that cream off, you don't get all the cream. It's still around the rim. We need to make sure that all of the cream of our crop here at Haywood County Schools has a chance to float on top and always be on top. And we don't need to eliminate anybody from having opportunities in honors classes and AP classes. And that goes even from the ninth grade to the 10th grade, and 10th grade on up, because there are students that are presently students in high school who can't get into the next level, because there's a cutoff. And it's like closing the door in a library and standing in front of it and saying, "No, you can't read. We can't let you in, but you have a whole bunch of books." I just think, we can't deprive our students. They deserve a whole lot more. We have so many people working so hard in rigor, and, you know, trying to get these kids to college, and college preparedness. So, I please ask that you consider getting class availability and proper pathways from point A to point B. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele.
Now, the board recognizes Mr. Don Smart.
Mr. Francis and school board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte. I'm Don Smart. I'm president, Haywood County Farm Bureau. In 39 years I've been on the board, we've had a pretty good rapport with the school board. The only time we come is to discuss agriculture issues. And that's what we got on our mind a little bit tonight. When we set our budget the last few years, we had some money, and we said, "What are we going to do with it?" Mr. Rogers said, "The best thing you can do with money is invest it in youth." And that's what we've tried to do. We've got several projects going on with the schools and agriculture. But our two pet projects are the two high schools, their FFA program and their ag program. It's come a long way since I was in ag. This year, we sent over nearly 50 kids to National FFA Convention in Louisville. Folks, if there's anything that'll inspire young people, it's the National FFA Convention. If you can't be inspired there, you won't be inspired. I'd like to thank this board for letting those kids go. It did a lot of things to them. I didn't get to go. I was a freshman in college, and that's four years too late. You heard what this little kid said up here. He saw that golf ball go through that pipe. He saw math in action. That's what the ag classes and the schools does. It puts science in action. The dean, you've heard it all. I've heard it 100 times this year. The other day, the dean of the School of Agriculture at North Carolina State said, "By 2050, we need to double the food production in this country."
That's right.
It's took 20,000 years. It's took twenty thousand years, folks, to get our agriculture where it is today. We ain't got but less than thirty-five years. I'm not here tonight talking about the farm kids, I'm here talking about if we do it, we've got to have all the kids, non-farm kids, working on this. There's gonna be great careers and the greatest industry and the biggest industry is, is agriculture. But for these kids to know about it, they've got to have some education and that's why we need to keep a strong ag program in our high schools. We're here tonight to address one, we think we've got, we've had two good programs going. We think Pisgah's down a little bit, but they've got a new teacher with a lot of promise and she needs support. As these teachers said here tonight, the key for a teacher, teachers have to have tools to work with if they educate the students. And we need some things going on at Pisgah which come to our attention and I've got two gentlemen here, I'm gonna turn my time over and let them address those things. And I hope the Board will listen and take care of it. Like I say, we appreciate working with you and we're putting a lot of money in it and we want, we wanna keep a strong program. Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Don.
Next, we have Mr. Buford Rice.
Mr. Chairman, Board.
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte.
Thank you for allowing us to speak here this evening. And I come through the ag program at Pisgah, served there as a chapter president and I got to go to the national convention two years in a row and it is inspiring to get to go. Being a part of FFA not only helped me in the agricultural industry, which my brother and I run a, a part-time farm here in Haywood County, but also helped prepare me as I serve as a pastor in our community and serve on the Executive Board Committee of the Haywood Baptist Association. And as a pastor of the community, we have monthly business meetings and we conduct those business meetings in parliamentary procedure and just like you do your meetings here. Those are skills and leadership things that I learned through FFA. Just like Farm Bureau supports us with scholarship and those issues, they support leadership building, just like the AIG programs, just like the environmental science programs that we heard about here tonight. That puts all this learning, those building blocks that start at the elementary level all the way up into high school. Many of us know that we are in a economic downturn and we have been for a long time. Because we've been in that economic downturn, a lot of, I don't discourage anybody from going on and getting a higher education. My Papa told me, get all the education you can, nobody can take that away from you and I firmly believe in it. But a lot of our technical schools is where the job's been at. That's where they're at. I remember sitting on the porch with my grandfather and he said, and on our farm, and he said, boys, if there's one, two things you do, he said, learn how to grow and produce your own food. And secondly, learn a trade because people's always going to have electricity, they're always going to have to drive their cars, they're always going to have plumbing. The average age of the farmer in Haywood County is fifty-seven and I believe in our state. There's opportunity around the corner for young people to go into agriculture. Agriculture is a seventy billion dollar, adds seventy billion dollars to our economy in North Carolina. It's eighteen percent of the state's income and employs over seventeen percent of our employees. The state ranks seventh nationally in farm profit with a net farm income for the state of three-point-three billion dollars in agriculture. Many of you on the Board do some things and, and serve in jobs and careers that are involved with agriculture. Now, our issue tonight is about the greenhouse at Pisgah. It's come to our attention and I, as the President of the Pisgah FFA alumni, found out that the greenhouse has been dismantled. And our goal is to ensure that that greenhouse is built back. That's like taking a tractor away from a farmer during planting season. You can't have a horticulture program without a greenhouse. You, you just can't do it. And our fear is that with budget, it would just get thrown together and we want to make sure that it's put together right and purposely with the right intent.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
I know that's not typical.
It's not typical, but I, I think the answer is, is that I know that it's going back.
It is.
And it's due to the Pisgah project. You know, we normally don't respond, but it's due to the Pisgah construction project, but with the intent of the Board has always been and the building and grounds has already discussed about where we're going to put it and I know that we, there's some concerns about quality of light, et cetera, et cetera, we need to address, but is that?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Is that okay? Because I know I'm on the building and grounds ex officio, but I do know that we've discussed that at length as well as the barn, uh, down at Pisgah.
We just have to make some adjustments this year to get through. But next year, we'll have the greenhouse back.
Next, the Board recognizes Mr. David McCracken. Excuse me, Dr. David McCracken.
Thank you.
I always knew you was David when you was growing up.
That's all right, that's, that's how my clients know me as well. For those of you who don't know me, I'm David McCracken. I'm a veterinarian here in Haywood County, Clyde. Went to school at Tuscola, graduated in nineteen ninety, went through the agriculture program. And it, it got brought to my attention, as I'm sure you're aware, about the, the greenhouse and the farm livestock building at, at Pisgah being moved. Before I first heard about it was with two interns that I have right now. I've been mentoring interns now for four years from Pisgah, some of them still work for me. A lot of those students that are working for me now, the reason I hired them is because some of the skill set that they had coming to me right out of high school, they got out of the FFA program, they learned in that seeing and doing there on the farm, the school farm. That school farm is something that I think we need to keep. It's also something I think we need to realize that it's a year-round thing, that the, the ag teachers that are running that really are devoting a lot of their time because, you know, even though school's out, plants has gotta grow and the cattle have to be fed and somebody has to do that. There was mention about, you know, going into tech schools and whatnot. I would encourage everyone to not think of the ag programs as just a place to put kids that are just going to a tech school. I went through the ag program. I was a President of FFA, my local chapter, I was a District Vice President. I got a five-thousand-dollar scholarship through Farm Bureau to attend North Carolina State University where I graduated with a doctorate. Now, kids that are going into the vet school program, if they don't have some of these hands-on experiences, like if, if you wanted to be a vet, but you were from a city, if I could show that I had had the opportunity to work with livestock on a farm, have a program, raise a calf, anything like that, that's gonna get me in as opposed to, I mean, it's very difficult to get into the vet school program now. We graduate seventy-two people a year right now out of Raleigh. Over five-hundred people apply for those seventy-two spots every year. What strengthens their application is what they're gonna be able to learn at Tuscola and Pisgah at those hands-on programs. Being able to implement what they learned in the science classes and taking it outside to help grow that animal, grow that sheep, or even leadership opportunities that they're gonna have through the FFA. One last thing I'd like to, to bring up and I'd like to offer my help if you would accept it, in the livestock programs, if they need any kind of professional advice on running those programs or what they should be doing or what they should be teaching, we'd be happy, I'd be happy, all the vets in the county would be happy to offer that assistance. Thank you.
The Board recognizes Michelle Crossy, have I got it right?
No, I'm Michelle Gross.
Gross, excuse me.
And my cousin's a doctor and by the way, is he here to get into medical school these days than it is to get into veterinary school?
My doctor one time said he would like to get as much for a blood test as they do at the vet's office.
Board members, doctors, thank you for letting me speak tonight. How many of you have heard the, the old saw about how well you are going to do academically? Depends more on your zip code than any other single factor. Has anybody heard that? That's an interesting statement, isn't it? Why would that be the case? About a month ago, I got a phone tree message from Tuscola saying that my daughter, who's a sophomore, should sign up for the PSAT the next day if she wanted to take it as a sophomore. So I sent Julie in in the morning to do that. She texted me at lunch and she said, they say there's no slots. So I started trying to call and couldn't get through and couldn't get through, it's a busy place, you know? I finally called and talked to Jane at the desk and she said, I know who you need to talk to, I'll get them your number. And so one of the administrators called me back and I said, what on earth? And she said, well, she said, there just weren't that many slots left available. And I said, you got a certain number of slots and that was all you got? She said, well, we set a number. And I said, oh, well, why did you do that? And she said, well, we're pushing for the ACT. And I said, you don't get to choose. Colleges and universities choose which they want to take, the ACT or the SAT. They do not, they do not depend on high schools to tell them. She said, well, yeah, but most, most North Carolina colleges take the ACT. I said, well, you know, some of our kids, they go out of state. That doesn't seem fair. And besides, we know that every time a kid takes one of these standardized tests, he does better the next time he takes it. So that means every one of our kids who is college-bound should be taking the PSAT as a sophomore unless there's some sort of compelling reason. I thought, well, maybe it's money. So I hassled her a little bit. And interestingly, at about a quarter till three, they called all the kids down who had been turned away and they opened up another door. I looked into this, do you know what it costs the school to give the, the PSAT? It costs them a teacher. Now, I'm on that sub-list you're going to approve hopefully later, this, this meeting. So I happen to know that that's seventy bucks a day and that gets you twenty slots because a teacher can supervise twenty kids taking this test. It seems to me that we ought to be saying to kids from middle school on, when you take the PSAT, when you are in the tenth grade, this is the kind of problem you're gonna see on. Every time we can mention it, we should be mentioning it because we live in a county where there are a lot of parents who just don't know. I mean, we're different, we're in this room, we're a school board meeting, we're probably educated, our kids get it anyway. That tells me my time, so I'm sorry, but I just want to say, you know, we don't want to be, we do not want to be classist. I know we don't. But if we're not careful, we're enabling the kids of those who already have to outdo the kids of those who already don't have. And that just doesn't seem like what we want for Haywood County. I would like to see us be a light on the top of the mountain, you know? And I brought a comic that I don't believe is a comic. Remember that Calvin and Hobbes comic where he's throwing snowballs at Susie and he misses and he misses and he misses? And all of a sudden, he hits her right in the kisser and she has taunted him the whole time. If it weren't for gravity, you couldn't hit the ground. We can hit the ground. If we don't do anything intentional to aim, the ground is exactly what we'll hit. I want to be above average, folks. That's what I want for all of our kids.
Thank you. I'm, I'm loving these names tonight, I apologize. Deion Gossi? Did I say it right?
Yeah, you did.
Very good.
And I have my little blue weight that my daughter gave me from her PE class today. She created a number of curl ups, I think a sit-up, that she is able to abdominal something is on this award, so y'all are doing a good job in PE.
I also just want to, as I appreciate all of you and your service and I got to meet with Rhonda and Lynn between the last meetings, that was really, they got a lot more than three minutes and it was good to discuss some ideas with them. That was wonderful, thank you for your time and hopefully I'll get to meet with more of you eventually. I, I know there's only so much time between these meetings. I also just want to honor Anna Williams. Gosh, she was sitting right here at our last School Board meeting and you know I care a little bit about this issue of education and my children probably wouldn't be in her school if she wasn't outstanding in more ways than one. Okay, I gave the Board and I think a couple of the administrators, just a little print off I did from one of the gold medal schools. You can go on, you know, US News and World Report, top schools in the country, whatever. This is what their pathways look like and I am not in any way, shape or form advocating that we go and, and copy this. When Rhonda and Lynn and I were talking and we were looking at a lot more horizontal alignment, a lot of things very different than what's necessarily here. But one of the pieces that we feel is needed is that our students have some clear pathways. So I'm on the Board for the Fund for Haywood County and we were able to vote for grants, for food and farming grants for our elementary schools through the Fund for Haywood County. And, and so, you know, there's lots of things and we realize there's lots of ways to educate our children, but those pathways need to be really clear. You know, if you take, if you're gonna take a seventh grade class in math at Canton Middle School where you get to take ninth grade math, then your third, fourth, fifth grade math teachers in, in elementary school need to know that you can take that ninth grade math at seventh grade. So they're not, they're, they're getting those kids that are able to do that, they're getting them ready and so they don't just have six kids in that program, but they have a whole group of kids that's ready for that program. So those pathways are real important, those visuals. We need to have that and, and I know that Carol Douglas and I met a couple of months ago back and she said, you know, getting all this stuff online was very difficult and it's time-consuming and, and et cetera. And so as much as we can, one of the things that we need, I think, are structures for our community to be able to volunteer more. You know, you heard Dr. McCracken stand up here. I have been at my school and told both my children's teachers, the principal, everyone, you need me, I'm here in the mornings, I have a child at two, he's, he has some preschool at, at two years old in the mornings and I will come and work at your school. The lady, the great-grandmother standing next to me at trunk or treat in third grade for Halloween party, she said, I keep telling them I'll volunteer. We need to have ways that people can help because as, as Mr. Nolte had, sorry, Dr. Nolte had talked about in a recent article, that they're just, the money has been cut and positions have been cut. But I think our county cares enough about education that we are willing to help and so that, some of this communication structures need to be put in place for volunteers and for clear, clarity on what the academic courses are.
Thank you. Mr. John Swanger.
Chairman Francis and Board and Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, I'm, I'm representing tonight our youth basketball in our area. Alan Clontz would like to have been here, he's our President, but he got sick. I think public speaking might have made him that way, I'm not sure. So I got a text today. I'm not sure where, what that is, but let me address this. I've been involved with youth basketball as a player coming through school. I was a coach, I was a Board Member, President of Waynesville Youth for a year, a parent of a kid playing ball and now referee youth basketball. It's very important to me and I continue to stay involved with it in spite of the fact that I don't have any more kids coming through the programs. But we are very concerned about the cost increase that has been handed to us for the use of the facilities in the county. For years now, we've been very blessed and we're thankful for the use of school gyms to practice and play on the weekends and really without them, you couldn't have a youth league. And in many ways, we express that to our schools when we have our games and when we play. Right now, currently, some examples, Canton Youth is paying twenty-five-hundred dollars for the use of gyms, that's for practice and then they use Canton Middle School for their game days, home games. Waynesville's paying about fourteen-hundred dollars for the use of their gyms, I'm not sure about Bethel and Clyde. We're now being told that next year, we'll be required to pay forty-eight-hundred dollars per organization. Now, that's a three-hundred percent increase and I can tell you quite certainly that it's impossible for us to do as youth organizations. For years, youth basketball's been a place for kids of every economic background to For years, youth basketball's been a place for kids of every economic background to be able to come. And we keep the cost down for that very reason. The fees at Canton are eighty-five dollars for a kid to play, but they, that means they're buying a uniform. If they have a uniform, they can still wear. Alan and them only require fifty-five dollars. At, at Waynesville, we've charged sixty, uh, and it, and it can vary depending on the family situation. Our conference fees are five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We pay six-hundred-and-twenty dollars in insurance, liability insurance when we are playing. They have to pay referees on each Saturday that they're home, five-hundred dollars. Have to pay a security guard. So everything we make in concessions, a good bit of that goes to pay for, for those needs. I can assure you that no, no youth organization's in a money-making business. When I served, if we hit zero, we were thankful, extremely thankful. All our coaches and volunteers, uh, our volunteers and all our workers. We charge three dollars at the gate for our adults and one dollar for students to get in. And that allows families the ability to have to travel. So, uh, as we go travel, it keeps that cost reasonable. I've even seen coaches pay the fees for our kids. So we're always about the kids. Last year, our two high schools sent a, a team to the state championship and a team to the final four. And most every one of those girls came up through our youth program. Uh, we're, we're just asking if we could sit down, negotiate a price that's reasonable. Uh, and, and that's what the youth organization's asking. That is unreasonable. I know Waynesville, we could go one more year if we have to pay that. And I don't think we can, can go past that.
Thank you. A footnote, we discussed this in, uh, Finance Committee tonight, so it's still on the table. Tyler Norris, Good or Goode?
Goode, yes, sir.
Goode, okay.
Good evening. Thanks to all of you for the opportunity to address you. I also thank every one of you for your service. I know you do a lot of work and, uh, spend a lot of time at this for our kids. I'm grateful. I spent most of the last fifteen years as a sports writer for the Asheville Citizen Time. I still cover games occasionally for that publication. I grew up loving sports, playing ball with my dad in the backyard, and always figured my children, it'd be the same way with them. My oldest, most certainly, is not. He's now in the fifth grade at Clyde Elementary. He doesn't care for sports one bit. And I wouldn't change a thing about him. As much as I've always loved sports, he loves science even more. He is more passionate about science than anyone I ever met. He already knows more about the subject than I ever will. Every day, he teaches me new facts about gravity, outer space, and all sorts of stuff I didn't know existed. Rather than driving him to Little League games, uh, his mom and I take him to science clubs. At the Coleman Science Museum in Asheville, he learns about rocks, outer space, and the deep ocean. Rather than building a backboard or a batting cage in the backyard, we transformed his bedroom into a museum. He gave up his room and he's willing to share a bedroom with his little brother, who he finds very annoying, so that he can have a museum to display artifacts like his fossils, his crystals, and other treasures he finds and collects. He's not so, he's not quite so passionate about other subjects, but he works hard at them. His mom and I insist on that. He regularly makes the A B honor roll, but he's never made anything lower than an A in science or history. My understanding is, at this time, in order to decide who gets into an honor science class in middle school or high school, administrators consider the overall GPA. I also understand there are not many honor science classes, perhaps just one in high school. Science is my son's passion. Just because he's not as strong in other subjects doesn't mean he should be kept out of a science class that was, that will challenge him. We should be encouraging our kids to pursue their greatest loves, not shutting them out. When my boy was three years, when my boy was three years old, he, he told me his goal in life was to become the first human to go to Saturn. I believe if he puts his mind to it, he will achieve that goal or anything else he wants to do. I hope you will provide him with the educational opportunities he needs to sharpen his mind so he can fully reach his potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight. And, um, I share your passion for children. I do. Thank you. As all of us do. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Terry, I'd like to make one comment. To the Farm Bureau Group, I would like to say thank you for your continued support, strong support financially, otherwise, time-wise, with our children in this county. And I think y'all done a great job over the past several years. And I would like to thank you, Mr. Terry, and Mr. Don, Beaver, David, and Mr. Carlisle. Thank y'all guys again for, for the hard work Farm Bureau puts forth to help keep us in education in these kids. And all the, all the vocational classes as well as all our academic classes as well. And all you people who are here tonight for, for the academics as well. I'd like to thank you for your comments.
Now we'll call on Dr. Ann Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, I will share with you my goals and performance indicators for 2013, 2014. Priority number one will be quality teachers, administrators, and staff. With that performance objective, recruit and retain highly qualified teachers, staff, and administrators. The strategies will include, continue to develop a mentoring program for new administrators and our teachers. Provide staff with training and implement the Common Core and Essential Standards, the crosswalks, power school, and other core areas. Ensure every school is a professional learning community. Recognize employees for achievement and accomplishments. And I think our board does a very good job of that. The measurements that I'll be using include teacher-administrator-mentor logs. Provide forty hours of Common Core Essential Standards Power School Professional Development Training for licensed staff by 2014. Dialogue with schools to assess PLCs and data analysis. And celebrate successes by recognizing employees at receptions, end-of-the-year celebrations, and Board of Education meetings. Priority number two will be high student performance. This test data was released last Thursday at twelve fifteen PM. So we'll be doing an extensive disaggregation. And Dr. Nolte will be talking about that in December. He provided you with several overviews, though. Performance objective is to provide a 21st century education for all students. This includes career and college-ready. Strategies will be to include, continue to increase students' performing at or above grade level. We know we have four areas that we'll be working on in our school improvement teams. Continue to improve SAT, excuse me, ACT. This is part of the rigor for career and college-ready. Continue to update and expand technology and increase the graduation rate for the five-year cohort. Measurements will include, uh, na, excuse me, analyze, release student assessment data and develop interventions. In-service provided for middle school and high school. Because if you'll recall, the ACT Explorer is in eighth grade. The ACT Plan Assessment is in 10th grade. And we use that for diagnostic predictors for future performance on the ACT. And then each school will have a mini lab. I know several of us went to Rutherford County and we were very impressed with what we saw there. We also realize that there's an expense to it. Want to be able to pilot perhaps at Central Haywood High School this year, the, the one-to-one initiative. And then graduation will increase by one percent by June of 2014. Priority number three will be healthy students in safe, orderly, and caring schools. Our performance objectives will include to continue to develop a comprehensive school health program for pre-K through thirteen and enhance security and safety on every campus. And we had a discussion about that tonight in finance. Strategies will include to work closely with pertinent community agencies to comply with local, state, and federal regulations. Maintain the site facilities and equipment to provide an environment that is both healthy and safe. Provide healthy life skills focusing on nutrition. Work closely with the sheriff and police officers to monitor our schools for safety. Provide administrators and central office staff in-service and also training. Provide resources to complete installation and update surveillance systems. And each school will revisit and revise accordingly the Safe School Plan, and you'll be approving those tonight. Measures will include, attend meetings with inter-agency groups. Review regular monthly annual reports regarding safety. Regular dialogue with Child Nutrition Director and North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Regular SRO meetings with law enforcement and involve the law enforcement at this level. Provide safe school training for all staff. Develop a plan with Safe Schools Director and Director of Maintenance. And plans from each school will be reviewed by the superintendent and then by our Board of Education for approval. Questions or concerns?
Anyone have any questions or comments for Dr. Garrett on goals?
Okay, the next item I'll be sharing is the organizational chart. We've looked at this, uh, a couple of times this year, but hopefully this will be the last revised copy that we have. You'll see our front page is citizens, and then how we go to the Board of Education Superintendent, Associate Superintendent, Principal, and then our school staff. Okay, you'll see on the next slide, uh, the direct correlation that I have with the people that I supervise, which includes Dr. Nolte, Jason Hines, Tracy Hargrove, Mr. Phillips, Ms. Wood, Ms. Francis, and Mr. Stiles. And then you'll see under them, the, uh, the people that they work beneath. Or the, the people that they work alongside. You'll see the Finance Department. Our Finance Director is Bob Phillips. And then we have Angie Gardner, who's the Assistant Finance Officer. Then we have Tina Nolan, Amanda Robinson, Brenda Mills, and Jennifer Welch for twenty percent. And this is all for a school system for about thirteen hundred payroll. And then Haywood County Schools, you'll see Dr. Nolte. And you'll see the many responsibilities that he has and the people that he directly supervises and their job responsibilities. He supervises Ms. Nesbit, Mr. Moss, Ms., Dr. Douglas, Ms. Ferrara, Ms. Glantz, Mr. Trantham, Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Lefford, and Mr. Parker. And you'll, you'll see the, the ladies and the gentlemen who work, uh, with those people. And then you'll see their job descriptions. We have Kyle Lefford at the ALC Program. Uh, he does dropout recovery. He does state data reporting. And then he also does dropout, uh, grants. Uh, you'll see that he works with Caroline Williamson. And then our new person that we have in place is Heather Toplin. Child nutrition. Ms. Francis is our director. Her assistant is Sheila McClure. Then we have Candy Metford, who is Child Nutrition Supervisor. Purchasing agent, you'll see Mary Ann Shove. And then you'll see our cafeteria managers and then our child nutrition workers. Transportation. Mr. Stiles is our Director of Transportation. He also does driver's education. You'll see Mrs. Green, who is the cost clerk. You'll see Mrs. Reese, who is the TMS. And then you'll see bus drivers, driver's education, and then you'll see mechanics. ITC, Todd Trantham is Director of Technology. He also does other responsibilities. And he works with Kim Guffey, who is media, uh, basically, and then Teresa Cook. And that's a new position for testing. And then you have the technicians. Tracy Hargrove, who is our Director of Maintenance and Custodians, works directly with Kristy Keener and Mary Jo Reese twenty-five percent of the time. And then we have custodians and their maintenance department. Questions or concerns?
It's a lot of folks.
It is.
I have ten employees and I can't keep up with them.
And hopefully those will be the last changes that we make, Mr. Francis.
Okay. That's a lot of people fewer than used to be. Okay, you're on the agenda next for the-
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as per General Statute 115(c)(55), I'm asking you to approve the school advisory councils as per indicated by each school.
This time we entertain a motion that they be approved as presented.
I make a motion and it approves.
A motion to be made by Mr. Henson, second to Ms. Shandival, to approve the school advisory council as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The board recognizes Mr. Hines.
Mr. Chairman, board members, you have a motion to approve, uh, a list of qualified observers for Haywood County Schools. This is required by law, uh, 115(c)(325). I'm asking you to approve it again this year because we have made some revisions to it. Uh, this is required. If a teacher's put on a improvement plan, they have the right to have an outside qualified observer come in and observe them. And we have to have this list for that purpose.
Okay. This time I'll entertain a motion that they be approved as presented. Ms. Milner's made the motion. I hear a second.
Sir.
So, Mr. Leatherwood, any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hines. Mr. Shepherd is next on with our Safe School Plan.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, as per General Statute, we presented this, uh, Safe Schools Plan to you guys in, uh, closed session. And now we ask for it to be approved in open session.
Okay. This time we entertain a motion to approve the Safe Schools Plan.
So moved.
Ms. Lilwood's made the motion, second to Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
The board now recognizes Ms. Joan Ferrara.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Garrett, uh, staff and guests. I want to present to you for your approval tonight, a proposed new report card for our children with most significant cognitive disabilities. You might wonder, what is a significant cognitive disability? For most of our kids, it's when they're functioning below an IQ of fifty-five. So if you think of a ten-year-old child, they might be functioning more like a five-year-old or lower. A lot of these kids have a lot of abilities. Sometimes they're trapped in bodies that can't, uh, really participate as fully in learning or communicate. But all these kids are required by law to have access to, uh, the Common Core standards. And in the past, what we've done is just do like English Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, Science, and give grades. And, you know, sometimes you do things for years and you, then you kind of stop and think, "Why are we doing that?" So our teachers that teach in the intensive intervention, uh, classes came and, uh, asked about another format. Well, since y'all approved of report cards, we had to take it to you guys to get your approval to do it. We kind of tested it on Ms. Shandival. She was sort of our parent, school board advisor. And the thing that I'll present you tonight has, I think, her blessing, so. Talking about the, uh, kids that are on the Extended Content Standards, the federal government allows us to test one percent of our, um, population, our tested population differently with an alternative test. And in Haywood County, that would be, um, forty-four students of the tested population. And we've been talking a lot about rigor tonight. I just want to let you know, we had twenty-eight kids on the Extended Content Standards, which means, you know, we have less, um, at that level than we could have because we really push kids, you know, we push kids maybe to other systems. And most systems go over on the one percent. But we push kids to, into the occupational course of study and try to provide them with job skills and training and things that they can be as independent as possible. So when we talk about rigor, that goes, we said, K-13 or preschool through thirteen. And it also goes for kids that really have the most learning challenges. Currently this year, we have forty-seven students that are being taught on the Extended Content Standards. And with our ADM, we could have seventy-six. And what are the NC Extended Content Standards? It's basically an alternate achievement set of standards. And every one of them are tied to the Common Core and the Essential Standards that kids in the general education classes have. There's a clear link, but sometimes the complexity and the way the child responds is, is, uh, changed to make it, uh, realistic for the student. An example of a Common Core, uh, standard and the Extended Content Standard, if you look at number six at the bottom, it says, "With prompting and support in the Common Core", this is a kindergarten standard. The child would name the author, the illustrator of her story, and define the role of each in telling the story. And then for a child that has a significant cognitive disability, with prompting and support, they would identify the print as part of the page, "Show me where I start reading." So you can kind of see where they're connected to the Common Core, but it's a level that, um, is developmentally appropriate for the student that we're teaching. I've talked about the background. Um, our teachers weren't satisfied that we were communicating effectively with the parents. They wanted our parents to understand that, you know, we are teaching science, social studies, math, English Language Arts, literacy, and, and the classes for our kids with the most significant disabilities. And when I'm talking about significant disabilities, I'm talking about children on feeding tubes, you know, children with multiple seizures every day, children, you know, who have toileting needs. I mean, we're talking significant, uh, learning challenges. Uh, but they wanted those parents to know that- But they wanted those parents to know that these children were being exposed to this. And then parents want to know how their children are responding to this, and an F and an A, a C doesn't really give parents much information. So with your approval, our new alternative report card for students with significant cognitive disabilities, and again, we're talking about 47 students out of a population of 7,600, they'll have a cover sheet, which is in your packet, and they'll have their attendance in a place where the parents assign. There'll be a grading rubric on the back of it, and the teachers are going to sit down with the parents, explain this new concept. We piloted it at Clyde Elementary and gotten really good feedback from parents. Then they'll provide a brief summary of the standards that they've studied for that nine weeks, and then they'll have a rubric score of one, two, or three. And I'll tell you what, let's just skip on over, I think if you look at the report card, that would make a first grade report card sample. The first page is where we have the attendance and the parent's signature and the parent's comments, and anything, if they want to have a conference, just like every report card that goes out in this county. And then the grading key is the next slide, and basically, a three would indicate that student had mastered that concept at the Extended Standards level. A two would mean they were progressing, and a one means they've been exposed to that, but they have not mastered it. And you can look at the first grade report card, this is an example. Mary Learns a Lot is our sample student, this is the first nine weeks. And, you know, in Language Arts, they were identifying similarities between a child's own experience and a written account, recognizing written words, and participating in communicative exchanges, and communicating directly with peers. And the parent would see that lately Mary has an amused look, almost a grin-hunter face when we read stories. And this is a child, you know, who's has significant challenges and maybe is trapped in a body where they can't communicate. But the parent realizes what they've been exposed to and how their child is responding. Or a child is identifying physical characteristics in the community, or identifying producers of products in the community, and Mary continues to make comments through inadvertently using the head switch, she enjoys it when we respond back to her, and she'll often coo or smile at us. And we just think that's much more, that's much better communication with parents, and that's what a report card is supposed to be. There's also an example in your packet of a high school report card, and the first two parts are the same as they are in the elementary report card. But again, for financial management class, we've been working with coins and bills this nine weeks. They identify the value of a set of coins and bills, and demonstrate ability to make purchases from stores and vending machines. And then their student can identify all the coins and bills and likes to sort and count money. To me, that's much more information than an A, B, C, or D. So anyway, our final thoughts, we appreciate you allowing me to explain this to you, and the fact that you reviewed it before tonight. We appreciate the teachers that provided input into it. We sincerely appreciate, Rhonda came and looked at the first one, and she went, "Oh my God, Joan, this is not good." You know, "This is not a good communication tool, go back to the drawing board." So we went back. But we appreciate the honest feedback, you know. So we went back to the drawing board, and then we showed her our second draft, and she was much happier, and I think she was right on, and I was really glad that she was honest with us. So this is for your approval tonight, if we can start using this, and we would start using it the next nine weeks, which would be the January report card. Any questions or comments, concerns?
Basically, it's a continuation of the student's IP.
But with the Extended Content Standards explained, so parents know what the child's being taught and how their child's responding.
I just want to say, I think you and your group have done a wonderful job on this. I think this is a long coming, I think it's wonderful.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, and we approve this.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers, second to Ms. Milner, to approve the report card for students with significant disabilities as presented. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Thanks, Rhonda.
There being no question or comments, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the October 14th closed and regular session minutes, and I did catch one mistake, and we've got it corrected now, on the regular session minutes. Are there any other additions or corrections that we need to do? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion, we approve the minutes of the October 14th closing regular session. Ms. Milner's made a motion to approve the minutes as presented, I hear a second. Second to Ms. Shandival. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. The board now recognizes Mr. Mark Shepherd.
Guys will be tired of seeing me tonight. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I have a couple of policies to bring before you tonight. The first one is a brand-new policy, it would be SA 21 when approved, it's about student advocacy. And the point of this one was that it was requested by the visitation team that came to do our last reaccreditation for advanced ed. They want it specifically spelled out, what ways that we go about advocating for each individual student, and you've got the policy there to look at, and it's really spelled out in many different ways. And it also enumerates that we have to adhere to, you know, North Carolina school law and Haywood County Board policy in doing this. It does not create anything new at this point in time, but it basically spells out exactly what we are doing.
Okay. All right, SA 21 will be tabled for 30 days for public input, or until the next board meeting.
Okay, the second one is P1, which is hours of personnel, and it basically is dealing with hourly people and their ability to accumulate, and when they, how long they can keep their comp time. And if you see the second page of that policy, number eight, where it says, "Employees accrue may accrue no more than a maximum of eight hours of compensatory time, which must be taken with the prior approval of the supervisor, no later than the last working day of the following month." That's the only change in this policy, and it would read, "Employees may accrue no more than a maximum of 40 hours of compensatory time, which must be taken, still with the approval of the prior approval of the supervisor, by the last working day of the fiscal year." And that gives basically more flexibility for principals to be able to allow people to take that time in a more meaningful way. Eight hours is a very little bit of time for people to get to accrue when they're helping us out. Usually it's the folks who are willing to, you know, come on Saturday, stay late, come early, fill in for somebody else who's out, and having to take it currently by the end of the current pay period really becomes meaningless for a lot of people, they just end up losing it. And you end up just punishing some of your best people, you know, by the current policy. This was brought about by principals, the principal group, the papa group coming to us and saying, "We'd really like to have more flexibility on this, so we can help our folks out." It puts a little bit more responsibility on those principals because they're responsible for keeping up with this comp time, at least at their building. They probably got a secretary doing it or whatever, but they need to make sure they keep this comp time used, because if the person were to leave employment, they would have to pay them for it. The idea is that by the end of the school year, if they don't use it, they lose it. But at the end of their employment, they would be paid out for it.
Okay. Board members, have any questions about this policy or comments?
It's been tabled correct.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
I do have one comment on it also, as well, as Mr. Shepherd had expressed, that this also, like you say, it's allowing our people that, most of them did lose that time, because if they did want to take it a certain time, then it would have been disruptive to their classrooms, and our teachers are so dedicated, they're not going to disrupt their classrooms and leave a sub in place or something like that. So it's very helpful throughout our whole system, and less disruptive by allowing this time to be built up till the fiscal year ends.
Yeah, it gives more flexibility as well, like if you've got a, let's say, a teacher assistant who you need to work at a particular time for a certain event, maybe you've got a fall festival going on, they can come and work four hours. If they had to burn that four hours by the end of that month, and even though that might be close to the end of the month, it would basically just be a donation for them, when they could do that a couple of times for you and would be able to stay home on a snow day and burn that time. And that, you know, actually, you know, make some decent use out of the time that they've given the system.
The principals group brought this, do the employees like this?
Right.
And, I mean, in the feedback that you've seen, and Jimmy, win-win?
Win-win.
Okay.
Okay, and-
That was my question. P1 will be tabled till the next board meeting for public input.
The last one is one that's already been tabled for 30 days, it's the one, P26, it's called Growth and Improvement Plans for Licensed Employees. It used to be the Action Plan Policy, and the reason this one has been rewritten, it is an old policy, but it's pretty much been completely rewritten to reflect the new laws on teacher evaluation, and it goes through the different steps, you know, of teachers who are performing well and are not performing well, and what levels of plans they would be placed on in order to see improvement.
Okay.
For that one, we are seeking approval.
Okay. Did we have any comments, public input? Did anybody have any comments? Okay. This time we entertain a motion that P26 be approved as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Henson. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
The board recognizes Ms. Jenny Wood for a very, very timely presentation.
Right in the nick of time.
I don't know what the weather's doing outside, but let's hope it's-
We don't want to lose-
Just cold and not icy or anything.
Hopefully, we won't have to use this tomorrow, but for your approval, we have the Incliment Weather Make-Up Plan that the Calendar Committee, we met November the 4th, and this is the draft.
Okay. Anybody want to make any further comments or questions about it? None until the phone lights up and says, "Why did you do so and so?" Well, I think it's a good plan, and looking at it, I think it addresses a lot of the questions that we've had about it in the past, so.
Thank you.
This time we entertain a motion to approve the Calendar Incliment Weather Plan as presented.
I move to approve the calendar.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Milner, I hear a second.
Second.
Second to Ms. Shandival. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Next item on the agenda is an approval request for North Carolina School Board's Action Center participation. In an update I received the other day, over 44 school districts have joined as of last month, the School Boards Association Action Center. I've talked to not only people across the state about this Action Center, but I've also talked to some local civic leaders and also some county commissioners to get what their feel is on it, and I've had real positive feedback on it, that the amount of money that we would spend, we might be able to gain with one possible change in vote down into General Assembly, it'd be well worth the money spent, is what I've heard so far. At this time, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the North Carolina School Board's Action Center participation by this board.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Leatherwood, I hear a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, due to the absence of the two members that we've got, could we table this for 30 days?
We tabled it last month for 30 days, we could do it additional 30 months, but right now, we got a motion and a second. I'm not trying to cut you off, I'm just saying, we-
I know.
There's a motion on the floor. Any other questions, comments?
What's a dollar spent, Mr. Chairman?
$3,000.
$3,000 is the final figure.
Mr. Chair, the board asked it, it's retrieved, and I don't know that we ever got it, since our finance chair not here today, what we were actually giving the North Carolina School Board Association. Do we ever get that figure to the board?
What was the total amount that we do for membership for the North Carolina School Board Association? I did see that information.
We had it, I think we should send it back, but I don't recall the numbers.
Would anybody have access to it tonight, did you know?
I looked it up, but I don't have it in front of me right now.
Any other questions or comments?
It's not on the agenda.
There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? We have a tie. I guess that means I have to vote on this. Well, I'm supportive of it, I have been from day one, so I'll vote in the positive to break the tie. Motion carries.
Let's see if we get to the comments.
Yeah. All right. Next, we have our regular monthly financial reports, and due to the absence of Mr. Francis, we'll have Ms. Milner, I believe, presenting those tonight.
We had a finance meeting earlier, and everything seemed to be in order, and so I would like to make the motion that we accept the finance reports as presented by Mr. Phillips.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the regular monthly financial reports?
Second.
Second to Mr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. And there was one other item we had to-
Another item that came from the Finance Committee, I would like to move that we accept the revised capital fund application for the Pisgah High addition.
Okay. And this came from the Finance Committee-
From Finance Committee.
And it was approved by the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, I hear a second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Henson. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Board recognizes Dr. Ann Garrett for some personnel issues. Recommendations, not issues.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have 13 personnel from separation from employment, and you have 11 leave of absences. For your approval, you have two personnel leave of absences, you have 10 employments, you have three employee status changes, you have one contracted service, 22 substitutes, you have four employee coaches, and you have four, excuse me, three volunteer services, and you have an item 10, which is one student athletic waiver, for your approval.
This time we entertain a motion, we approve the personnel as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Rogers made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second to Ms. Milner. Any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We have one other item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's my pleasure to ask Mrs. Susan Savage, Principal at Hazelwood Elementary, to introduce our new Assistant Principal and Title I Teacher.
Since I have been at Hazelwood Elementary, I have not had an Assistant Principal. I was the last Assistant Principal on staff, and that was six years ago. Currently, we have 518 students, pre-K through 5th grade. The staff is very excited to have an Assistant Principal, as well as someone that will be working with our students that need additional reading support. I believe that we have found someone that will fill these spots on our staff, and we are hoping to get her started as soon as possible. I am very honored to be able to introduce our new halftime Assistant Principal and halftime Title I Reading Teacher, Mrs. Nicole Revis.
I'd just like to thank Chairman Francis, the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, for this wonderful opportunity. I'm looking forward to serving the Hazelwood community. Thank you.
Thank you. In the personnel part, did- In the personnel part, did we approve the waiver for the student? Okay. Wanted to make sure that was correct. Okay. Thank you. I didn't catch it in my ear. I apologize. Is any other further business needs to be before?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to address the board here on this thing and address you, please if I could. Last week, the 2012-2013 school performance indicators were released. There's a lot of buzz about scores, some good, some left worrying what happened. Either way, the scores are what the scores are. In the weeks to come, there will be more analysis of the data, and I would like for that to be placed upon the board's agenda for the next several months. Also, the board and the stakeholders need to be informed of the action plans for those schools that did not meet the academic growth. As stated and understanding the new test scores, the data sources indicated that the next big challenge is career and college readiness, like access to additional college credits, increased college readiness, ACT work key scores. If we know about these challenges, the next several board meetings should be focused on how to overcome these challenges. I believe in our students, I believe in our teachers. I believe that if we keep raising the bar, within the next two years, we can be in the top 10, and within five years, in the top 5% of the schools in North Carolina. And while doing some research on this, Lord knows, if you get on the Department of Insurance, that's what you've got to sort of study up. Came across something, I don't know if every board member's ever read, I'm not going to read it to you tonight. But there was Jill Barker, Principal Beth Little Elementary School. Her comments to the State School Board are immaculate. And there's one thing in here, one line I just want to read. "Our story is about challenges, no excuses." I think if you get a chance, get on the website, read this lady's, it's an excellent, excellent article. Shows the struggles, but how she never took excuses. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for your time, let me address the board on those comments, sir.
Yes, sir. Ms. Morris, would you give us a written copy of your comments tonight?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind doing that? And that way we can get it on the agenda.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to email those to you. They're important.
I'll put those in a column.
Okay.
When she made those, I can forward that to you.
Okay. I'm also talking about his personal comments, so we can have
Well, most of his comments come from that, well, again, like I say, I would pull from that, pulling from that understanding of the new state test scores.
Okay. Any other comments? Please come forward, board, before we adjourn. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.